Lisa.
I'm already.
Yeah, yeah, it does appear that we are good to go.
All right. Great, I will start off with the script first. Thank you all for joining the March 11th, 2021 Lewisville Planning Commission meeting. I am Chair Steve Brownice. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. All attendees will show up in the attendee panel for us to see. Attendees are muted unless called upon to speak during public comments. To request permission to speak, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking on the raised hand at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in may enter *9 on your phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and you have been unmuted, please first state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and maintaining meeting decorum. With that, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner Hefner.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
I'm here.
Chair Brownice.
Here, thank you very much. With that then, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
The move, second.
Jeff, with the motion and was it Keaton with the second? Excellent, thank you. And we'll do a roll call for this.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yep.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, thank you very much. With that then, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the February 11th, 2021 meeting? Seeing nodding heads in general, I would entertain a motion to approve those, please.
The move.
Commissioner Williams and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Moline, thank you very much.
Yep.
And roll call on the approval of the minutes, please.
Commissioner Howe.
Approved, yes.
Commissioner Hefner.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Chair Brownice.
Yes, thank you very much. And then we would open the floor for public comments for any items that are not on the agenda. If you, as we do with every meeting, have something to speak on that is not part of this evening's agenda. And Lisa, if I can lean on you to...
Yeah, I do not see any hands raised. Again, *9 on the phone or the raise hand button on your screen. Yeah, no hands raised.
Thank you very much. And then we'll move right into our first item of new business. And I believe that is you, Lisa.
Yeah, good evening, Commission members. Give me a minute while I pull up the presentation here. Sorry, the Zoom panel is in my way from sharing here. All right, can you all see that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Great. All right, so tonight, the first item up for consideration is consideration of a planned unit development and special review use for the property at 809 Main Street. This would be Resolution 3 recommending approval of planned unit development to allow renovation of a portion of the existing structure, as well as construction of an addition on the existing structure and associated site improvements, along with a special review use to allow youth group 35 outdoor eating and drinking establishments. Public notice was met per the municipal code requirements.
Thank you, and with that, I would ask any commissioners if they have any disclosure or conflicts of interest? Seeing none?
I would just like to say, a member of the applicant team is one of my clients, but I have no interest or financial connection with the project, so I don't think that it will get in my judgment of the project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Howe.
Great. All right, so for a little bit of context, we are here in downtown Lewisville. This property is on Main Street. It's on the block north of City Hall, so on the south side here, you can see Spruce Street. It's on the west side of Main Street with the front elevation facing toward the east. A little bit of historic context, I know the applicant is going to go through this probably in a little more detail than I am, as well as with a little more explanation, but you can see this building has been here. It was constructed, we believe, in 1900, and it's next to the iconic State Mercantile Building. And you can see a portion of the facade here to the right. As well as now, we're looking down Main Street to the south, and this structure is here on the right side of the screen, again, State Mercantile and then 809 Main here. In a more recent photo of the property as it currently appears today, and so you can see it's retained its original form, much of its original form, particularly the false front storefront. The windows are still in roughly their original shape and location, but they have been replaced over time. The brick banding and then closing of the gaps here, that work is not original, obviously. And over the years, we believe the original portion of the structure, which is roughly the front 25 feet, was constructed in around 1900, and there's been kind of numerous additions and iterations of the property over time. And now total roughly 2,145 square feet of development on the property. There is not any previous approval for a planned unit development or a special review use, so this is the first time this has been through a land use application. And the property's been vacant since Waterloo relocated a couple structures to the north since approximately 2017. So it has had some temporary tenants in there kind of from time to time, but essentially vacant and in substantial need for some reinvestment, as well as stabilization and reconstruction work. Along with the PUD and SRU application, they are going through a concurrent landmark grant and alteration certificate review. Those were considered by our Historic Preservation Commission back in December of last year with recommendations for approval. And the entire package is going to be going forth to planning, or excuse me, to City Council, kind of all in one review after your recommendation. So when we look at the site, again, this is extremely narrow and extremely deep, and you can see that the majority of the lot is covered with development. This darker gray portion is the portion that will be retained and restored and preserved. That's roughly the front 25 feet. Everything beyond that will be new, so everything that's existing will be taken down, and this would be new construction beyond that 25 feet. From a front elevation perspective, this is looking straight on from Main Street. So you can see really the changes to the existing front structure. Again, this is subject to the Alteration Certificate for Historic Preservation Commission, includes really restoration of the existing false front, so some repair work on the upper portion here. There'll be new replica windows that match the old historic photos, as well as removal of the brick that was added with historically appropriate materials. One thing to note here is currently this front door is not ADA accessible. There's a step up into the building. This front door will be lowered to meet grade and provide ADA accessibility into the building. This gap will continue to be closed off with a decorative metal panel, so there are gaps in there between the adjacent structures. And then when we get further beyond, the new second-story addition begins behind the 25-foot original structure and then a second floor kind of beyond that. So it's shown a little more clearly when we get here into our side views. So the upper view is looking to the south. This is the north elevation. The lower view is looking to the north, so south elevation here. Again, you can see front 25 feet relatively unchanged from a forum perspective. At that point, a single-story addition with a rooftop deck is in this middle section of the building here. You can see this is an open kind of steel trellis design where folks could hang kind of ornamental lighting, maybe shade sails, things like that, really intended for use by restaurant patrons. And then the second-floor addition kind of begins at that point and is, you know, set back at this point fairly deep within the property. These lines here represent sightlines, so this would be a person, you know, standing on the opposite side of Main Street. So really, you can see that if we look at those sightlines, this front kind of front portion of this canopy structure, you know, may be somewhat visible, but really, the second-floor addition is also going to be, you know, pretty much obscured by the existing structure itself. And so really, that's a good historic preservation principle, as well as does meet some of the guidelines and standards in the design handbook to really have that be subordinate. As we go deeper into the lot, there is an existing accessory structure that is much closer to the alley than this development would be. So they do comply with a 20-foot setback, however, they do need a waiver in order to construct this covered park cover here. It's open on all sides, but it does provide weather protection for the parking and service area at the back, so there is one waiver associated with it. On, excuse me, on the south elevation, you can see the, oh goodness, excuse me, a portion of the building at the rear is visible from Spruce Street, so you may be able to kind of vision. This is the outline for 801 Main, the State Mercantile Building here in the dash line. And so really, this portion of the structure will be visible from Spruce. And so they've added some detail here with a recessed deck area and some ornamentation. Really, this serves twofold, you know, one for architectural interest, but primarily to allow light and accessibility into the rear of the property there. And so when we kind of get into the analysis, I'm not going to go through all of these. The staff report, you know, went through all of the criteria, but generally, staff finds that the design meets all of the regulations for the design handbook in downtown Lewisville for the core area, as well as for additions to historic structures. I won't go through all of the numbers. Those were provided in your staff report, but essentially, the way this property is developing does not trigger the need for onsite parking, but they are providing one space. And as I mentioned, there is the waiver request for that canopy in the rear, but staff supports that and find that it does meet the criteria for supporting waiver through improved design. When we talk about the SRU, staff finds that the application meets all the criteria. Their hours of operation could accommodate, and this is really for that rooftop deck portion off the front. So when we think about kind of where we're going to be occupying the site outdoors, it's up on that first floor addition or the first floor deck above the first floor behind the original structure. So it's really going to be shielded, you know, entirely from the west by that second floor. But they are proposing hours of operation from 7:00 AM to midnight, seven days a week. And so I know that that's something that, you know, Planning Commission has discussed in the past and what's appropriate for these properties. There's a table in the staff report that, for comparison, we can pull that up if you need, kind of what some of the other allowances are, but really, 7:00 AM can accommodate breakfast through midnight. And then they are requesting that kind of any type of music could be played during those hours of operation. With that, we are recommending approval of Resolution 3, and we have no conditions at this time.
Thank you very much, Lisa. At that point then, we have time for Commissioner questions of staff. And I see all four of you on screen, but I do not, okay, excellent.
The applicant has a presentation for you as well.
Great, if we can queue that up, I know we have to do some behind-the-scenes Zoom magic.
Sure, Andy, you should have permission now to share your screen.
There we go, that's showing full screen now, Andy, thank you. Oops.
There we go. I had to unmute myself, sorry, I had to go backwards. This is Andy Johnson with DAJ Design at 922A Main Street. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing this application tonight. Thank you, staff, for your continued partnership on projects downtown, and particularly with this one. I have to say that I think Lisa's presentation is very much in abbreviated form of her staff report, which was incredibly comprehensive, so I will reiterate a few things that she went into this evening, but with your permission, I'd love to kind of give you the full picture of the history of the project, as well as give you a little bit more information, you know, in terms of some of the 3D images. And Lisa was really great about not stealing my thunder, so thank you, Lisa. All right, so let's dive in. As was mentioned before, this project was presented to the Historic Preservation Commission. I think we had a lot of, lot of good discussion and excitement about it. The images that you're looking at on this first screen are two images taken not too far apart, but what you can see is that on the left photo, the, the building that is to the right of what is now the State Mercantile Building. So this is the corner of Main and Spruce. This is where the State Mercantile Building currently exists. So you can see it looked pretty different. And this little building right off to the right, right above the guy with the hat, that's, that's 809 Main. Taken not too, too much later, maybe within 10, 10, 15-year period, you can see that the building looks the same on the corner, but right off here to the side, you can see that 809 Main started to take form in what we know it to be today. And so we presume that this is somewhere in that first, first, you know, iteration and showing the first maybe 25 feet of that structure. You can see the images here circling those buildings. This comes from the, the, one of the original drone survey maps, and you see a series of the same property with the different iterations of the buildings that occupied this, this kind of little piece of the pie downtown. The top version shows what may have been an outbuilding, a dwelling unit. It's marked with a D, so that typically means dwelling unit. As we get to the middle part, it, it's hard to see, but it says barber. So at one point, it might have been a barber shop with some kind of outbuilding in back. This is where we think the first 25 feet ends. And then the next iteration, which was early 1900s, it turned into some kind of second-hand store, and that's the bottom image. So in red, this is what we have identified as the original historic part of the house, and then we, we are using this as our period of significance for historic preservation. Images showing Main Street looking south with the 809 Main circled here in the left photo. This is probably right around 1900. And then the photo to the right shows Main Street in the snow with, you can see the coal, the coal mountain, which is now a community park, starting to grow, obviously, a lot more electrical infrastructure. You know, Lewisville's developing, however, this building is obviously still there. A couple images of the building taken, again, right around the turn of the century, on the left, showing the second-hand store. On the right, this shows, this shows 817, which is the neighboring building, and you can see that that was actually quite a beautiful building, complementing, you know, all the structures along Main Street. And you can see that 809 Main had a lot of similar, really nice, fine detailing with dentiles, moldings, lots of, you know, simple, but I think very elegant trim details, and we intend to bring all of that character back and would love the opportunity to make, you know, the building next door do the same thing. So a couple aerial images showing that this building really hadn't changed a whole lot until, you know, past the 60s. To the right, you see the 30s photo showing the 809 property. And then the 1962 photo, again, showing the 809 property with the same ending point, with maybe a few less outbuildings in the alley. Street view, we dated this in 1962 because of the Paul Newman movie showing on the Rex on the, the marquee. You can see that the building really hasn't changed a whole lot in this photo. It has a blade sign, has some different cars out front, but really, the windows, the doors, all the siding detailing looks really very much the same. And so where it really started to change were the late 60s, early 70s. So this is a photo looking across Main Street, and you can see that the State Mercantile Building had lost a lot of its, a lot of its, you know, kind of detail and appeal. And this brick band was added all the way across these three buildings, and presumably was done at the same time. And, and a few other images looking, looking down Main Street, we're presuming these are somewhere in the 70s where that brick band still occurred on the State Mercantile Building. It disappeared on the 817 building. If you've been in Lewisville long enough, you'll recognize that wood siding, which was there from really not that, not too long ago. What's, what's interesting is that into the 70s, even the top part maintained a lot of its original siding, and what we believe is there now is that same siding just underneath a fiberboard siding product. So we're anticipating to be able to restore a lot of original material, even though some of the finer detailing maybe have to, may have to be recreated. And then you can see on the side, you know, the, the detailing at 817 changed quite a bit. The brick is obviously still there. And then a few other views, looking at, in color, seeing the brick. And then looking at, from a historic preservation perspective, one of the best photos that we do have of the entire building is this 1948 assessor record photo. And while it's a little fuzzy here, there are certain details that we can pick out at the smaller scale, and we can start to see a little bit of the detailing below the windows. We can see the dentiles, and we have some other close-up photos of the building to really match what this building will look like once we do a final historic preservation effort. And then this is the building as it is present. So like I said, we believe that underneath this siding, we're going to find the old clapboard siding with that two-and-a-half-inch reveal. Almost all of the trim that's exposed on this upper part is actually original. And it's interesting that it's lasted that long, given that there's a lot of water infiltration and things to be able to, to work on and correct. The whole lower portion will have some discovery once the brick comes off, but we'll be largely recreating things that were added, you know, over time, as maybe windows needed to be replaced and different types of fenestrations were required for the different businesses that, that have been occupying this building. So let's look at the site plan. The blue is 809 Main. The neighboring buildings are, are in yellow to the top and bottom. And as Lisa pointed out, it's a very long, narrow property. One of, one of the narrower properties in downtown at just about 22 and a half feet wide. The blue here indicates what's existing, including the outbuilding along the alley with the courtyard in the middle. If you've been in Lewisville long enough and you've eaten at the old Waterloo, you'll, you'll recognize those components. One of the things that's interesting is that this, this building really never had, or has not had parking for, for quite some time. And so it kind of sets an interesting benchmark for us to start with the development for a downtown project. Looking at a simple view of the site plan, as mentioned before, we are preserving the first 25 feet, shown in red. We are adding a fairly substantial two-story addition to the back to extend the main level all the way back to 20 feet before the alley, and then adding a second floor over most of that footprint. So we're calling this our 25-foot preservation line, and then we have our 20-foot setback line. We looked at options for a three-story building. We looked at an option that actually extended the second story over that 20-foot setback to really maximize the amount of area that we could get out of this site, given that it's so constrained and so small. And we really felt like our best strategy was to take a more straightforward approach from a zoning perspective, honor that 20-foot setback, still want to have a covered parking area, but we're not going to put building back there. And so we're, we're not, we're, we're keeping the bulk away from the edge of the alley and really trying to be respectful of the neighbors across the alley in doing so. As I mentioned, covered parking for over that last 20 feet. We do have a plan for a grease trap, trash enclosure, covered trash enclosure, and then one parking space, which is large enough to be accessible and large enough to allow for deliveries also to be coming in through that rear entry of the building. All right, so a couple floors, some floor plans stacked, starting with the basement on the bottom, main level in the middle, and upper level on the top. As mentioned, we have the 25 preservation line that stacks up for all the plans, the 20-foot rear setback. And then probably the most notable feature of the new addition are the rooftop balconies. Now, we, we did look at these in a number of locations, including off of the alley, but we really felt strongly that the activity of the building in an outdoor environment really belonged on Main Street and not towards the back. It's a residential environment in the back, and it really helps, you know, the, the activity along Main Street. It helps the sort of separation to a more private and maybe a little bit quieter environment if, if, if we have building blocking the, the kind of activity that would happen on the roof deck for evening dining, amplified music, if it, even if it's just through speakers and it's being streamed as opposed to live. We do have a balcony that faces south, as Lisa pointed out, and the intent is to bring natural light into the middle of the upper level, but it's also providing an opportunity for another outdoor dining environment. So obviously, with a COVID environment, these, these spaces are becoming a little bit more at a premium, and we actually have extended this rooftop deck to be a larger space in response to our, our, our current environment, but also it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a lovely place to be, and we have a lot of opportunity to create temporary enclosures if necessary, and also shade sales and a really nice kind of indoor-outdoor environment with a door that entirely opens up to that rooftop deck. Elevation views showing existing building. Elevation view now showing what, what is proposed. As Lisa mentioned, we are going to take away the almost eight-inch non-accessible step into the building away. And we're going to be lowering the floor as a part of the preservation project to allow for a proper entry into the building. We are going to restore all the windows to their original character, all the siding and trim and details of that front facade, and there'll be a lot of energy placed on that, you know, during that process. And then you can see in the background, the two-story addition. Elevations are never really very forthright in the overall expression of a building, so it's always important to look at it in perspective, which I'll share with you in just a little bit. So side-by-side comparison. And then this is the page that you, that you reviewed as a part of our PUD package showing all of the elevations. Again, annotated front elevation, annotated rear elevation, showing the, the band here, which is our covered parking area, and then a fairly, you know, simple facade for the alley side. This is probably one of the more instructive diagrams. So this is a, an side elevation, really kind of a section through the gutter between the two buildings, so looking at the side of 809 Main, cut all the way through Main Street. So we were really interested to see if you're on Main Street and you're across the street, what's your view corridor really going to be like looking from there all the way to the new addition, and how much of this new addition are you really going to see? So in red, this is the, this is the overall building, including the historic building. And then this is our view line from, let's, let's just say, a five-foot, 10-person standing kind of against the buildings on the other side of the sidewalk. And while we intended to try to shield that addition from Main Street as much as possible, it actually kind of worked out really well with that 25-foot setback and using the rooftop deck as a buffer to the actual two-story architecture. It allowed us to have this really nice Um, it allowed us to have this really nice kind of stepped uh experience of of the building. Uh, looking at it from the south view, so the view that Lisa showed you actually showed uh eight oh one, the State Mercantile Building kind of cut away and dashed in. Here I'm showing it to you as if, you know, it's the two two-dimensional view from Spruce. And then there's there's quite a bit of fence structure and kind of accessory uh building on the backside of eight oh one. So there's, there's not a lot of eight oh nine that actually gets to peek over the fence, but you get to see some of it. And the and really the main thing is the the rooftop deck is kind of, or the uh sorry, the patio off that south is sort of that main feature. Um, and here it is shown in red. As mentioned, uh a site analysis was was provided on um uh on our sheet. I wanted to to bring it up just so you could kind of browse the numbers again, if just to refresh your memory if if um if it's been a while since you reviewed it. Um, we are, we are within our building heights. Um, we don't really have a lot of setbacks except for that twenty foot rear setback to be mindful of. Um, and we're at twenty foot two or twenty foot two inches. Um, probably the more interesting thing is the parking calculations. So one of the things that comes into play with the parking calculations is that the intended tenant of this building is um is a food service tenant. And so with that and within um Louisville's code, there are, there are some exclusions of which I wanted to be very transparent and clear on how we did all that. And so um we reviewed this with planning staff, went through all the areas and um, you know, listed everything as completely as possible. Since we start with zero and we don't really have any parking requirements, we felt like it was important to provide at least one. Um, since we didn't want to go into a shared trash and recycling and compost agreement with a neighboring building, we decided to keep all that on site and keep that um within within the buildings and the tenants' responsibility. So we are providing only one space uh for for the building. A couple three D views. So these are the ones that are fun. You get to see that uh that second story addition really only gets the pop-up over the top as you look at it uh uh from across the street. Um, our section view actually kind of shows it diagram, but is not seeing it very much. Between AutoCAD and SketchUp, it's some some of perspectives are a little bit different, but you can see that a lot of it is largely shielded. But what's nice is to see this building standing by itself without the brick with um, you know, with the windows and all the facade, you know, brought back to its original character. So coming down to the south of that. And then a couple aerial views looking down. And you can see the massing of the original building versus the the new addition. And then a view looking into uh that rooftop deck. You can see we've got opportunity for retractable awning, shade sales, lighting. But but the the best part about this is that the bulk of the building is really guarding it from the west side, which is the residential side, and really focusing it back towards Main Street. Uh, uh, upper view looking from the southwest corner back down, you can see the the little deck off the south side, and here's the covered parking area. And then a view from the alley looking at it from the northwest side with the covered parking uh trash enclosure and then the the back service door. So we took it a little bit, a little bit of a step further. We took views uh walking down Main Street and we built our model uh into the three D views by matching up perspective lines so that we could see uh exactly how the ramifications are of stepping that second story back. And you can see from standing at Walnut on Main Street, you really don't see hardly anything. And there is a view corridor through the Waterloo's roof deck because it is open over the top of, you know, kind of their fence line that that borders the south side. Um, walking down a little bit further, so directly across from the new Waterloo. Um, eight seven, eight seventeen really largely um blocks the second story. But um and keeps the 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 historic building very, very prominent. Um, and then again, walking around the front, so a little bit different perspective, it's right across the street uh than the one we looked at before. And then coming around to Spruce, looking north at the south side of eight oh nine main. Um, you can see that uh there's just not a lot of that building that really is is uh projecting past uh eight oh one main. However, you know, you do see the more interesting features of that side, even though it's a fairly simple addition. Um, we have had some discussions about this alley. So the alley is a bit problematic in terms of access for uh trash removal, uh access for deliveries, and a lot of it has to do with the utility structure that's in the alley. So in red, um, the alley is shown as the surface here. Lots of projections into the platted alley surface from the west neighboring side, as well as uh some utility infrastructure within the right of way. However, these poles are significant, some of the more robust power lines uh left in downtown. And so we've been talking about um a possibility of a utility upgrade for this alley and and potentially a a a one or two blocks beyond this block um to bury these lines and clean it up so that garbage trucks aren't hitting the power lines. Delivery trucks aren't hitting the actual power lines and, you know, causing service delays and issues with internet and power. So uh, this is a, again, simplified site plan. Here's the alley surface. You can see that just across uh just across from eight oh nine main, there is building infrastructure that's projecting into the platted alley. Now, a lot of that's going to be hard to correct because it's been there for so long. However, um, you know, there, the utility uh discussion is definitely something that um we're wanting to continue to pursue and we've uh, we've been um kind of going down a whole different path with the city uh with those discussions. So hopefully with this project, we get kind of a, you know, it's the impetus for maybe a a nicer environment within that alley. And we all know that if you're in downtown, the alleys are all walkable, just like the sidewalks, they're just not as pretty. But they certainly are functional and usable, so it's an important aspect. I'll leave you with this view. Um, I would love to answer any questions if there are any, um, and I'll I'll end my presentation there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move into commissioner questions of the applicant.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hefner.
I just wanted to be clear on the um amplified music. You you're requesting all the way through midnight on the PD.
Commissioner Hefner, your audio unfortunately is cutting in and out a little bit. Um, can you restate the question?
Yeah, I I was asking with the uh amplified music, i- is the request to have that all the way through midnight? Is that, is that what I understood correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only question.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have a question for staff, actually.
Okay.
Just to speak a little bit to uh from a, from a planning design perspective, the role of setbacks, in particular in the alleyway here. And uh I I know, right, due to the history of a number of things, there are lots of encroachments. And at times uh rules have been enforced and at times they haven't been, or at times rules didn't exist. Um, can you just kind of speak in very general, broad terms?
Sure, um, so my understanding, you know, I I none of us were probably around when this initial twenty foot setback was um formally established in our code. But generally, um, speaking, um, staff at this time believes it serves a couple purposes. Um, one is just to help buffer um development from kind of the existing um residential or commercial properties. So this twenty foot setback is a consistent setback in all of the downtown zoning. So on any property, there's a twenty foot rear setback. So one thing, right? So it kind of serves as a buffer. Um, secondly, it allows for parking and service areas at the rear of the properties to keep those functions out of the alley to the best degree possible, right? So our alleys serve as, um, Andy mentions, our alleys serve a lot of purposes. Um, one though is vehicular and service needs for these commercial properties. And so really, um, that twenty foot setback allows for um kind of the back-of-house functions on these lots um to be um for a space for that to happen. And um as well as when possible, it's um deep enough to provide a parking space or two. So um twenty foot, you know, really when we look at a parking depth, we're looking at around, you know, eighteen, nineteen feet. And so twenty foot also then could accommodate a vehicle. And so um really, you know, again, numerous purposes for this twenty foot setback in this context. Um, again, as noted, there's a waiver request for the canopy, but um staff provide or finds that that does not reduce the effectiveness of the purpose of that original twenty foot setback. So it still accommodates parking, it still accommodates um service and things, needs the back-of-house needs for a building kind of within the private lot of the development. But it does provide, um, you know, a couple of things for the property, you know, some um, weather protection for um that business as well as um kind of an additional shielding in a way that's not extremely impactful to the adjacent properties to the west, right? So um kind of keeps that feels more enclosed, even though it's actually, you know, functionally open on all the sides. So I'll offer that as a rationale.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Background, Commissioner Moline.
Thank you, um Chair Bronis. Andy, if I, if I may call you Andy, um, Andy, I just have a a a couple, maybe one quick question. And then first, I just wanted to comment, I really appreciated the fact that you provided all these different perspectives and views. It's really helpful to see all of these to to, I I think it gives us a really good idea of how this building is going to fit into the block. And so I just wanted to acknowledge all the um the different views and different elevations that you provided. And of course, the historic context as well. I really appreciated that. Um, my question is, I don't know, it's it's maybe almost trivial, but I'm 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 kind of curious about how and who does the maintenance in these really small areas between the the buildings themselves. And I'm just wondering if you would be able to comment on that.
You bet. Um, first of all, thank you for the kudos. I appreciate it. We did do, we we did do a lot of work. It was uh really necessary, you know, for any downtown project, you know, we it it's uh, it's so visible, so. Um, but thank you. Uh, that's a great question. Um, so currently, there is a maintenance easement between eight oh one and eight oh nine main. And that exists, uh if you can still see my cursor, that's on the left side. And it's a fairly narrow uh space between that existing building and eight oh one.
Okay.
There's actually, there's actually a little bit of architecture there that's raised and it's a gutter. And so um there is an easement there to make sure that that stays maintained.
Okay.
And there's just enough space. And I, when I say just enough, I mean, it's just enough to get in there and do some siding replacement and maintenance, painting, et cetera.
Okay.
On the right side, um, that's actually a walkable, we'll call it a gutter. It's a concrete gutter drainway where right at the bottom, there's a collection basin that ties directly to the storm sewer.
Okay.
And that actually um is a very reasonable amount of space for maintenance. Um, it, it is uh actually largely the neighbors uh easement. So it it'll be a discussion if this property to the north ever develops. But um I think, I think in general, there has been um really good precedent and kind of continued acceptance that um these kind of spaces exist um despite development in downtown.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, um, I have several questions, nothing highly substantial or anything, just a lot of it's curiosity and stuff. Um, I'm wondering um how long you expect the construction to last? Um, also, do you have a tenant uh in mind? And um, this is obviously a COVID question. Do you plan to have any kind of heating on the rooftop? Obviously, um, we all know what that was about. Um, throughout the uh winter, we um used heating for literally um every outdoor space we could. Um, and then um the music, I'll stop there and then I'll I'll um let you catch up. And then I'll uh ask a few more questions.
Okay, great. Um, I I before I answer that, I I do want to take the opportunity to to make sure that that I mentioned that the rest of my team is here too. So uh Dana Youssef from TiVo uh Properties is with us tonight as well online. He can answer any other questions that, um, if you have of him as well as me. But I can answer those first questions for sure. Let me uh, I'm I'm not going to go in any, in the order that you went, but I'll I'll go in the order that stuck in my mind. How about that? Um, heaters, yes. So the structure that we've designed for that rooftop deck is intended to provide for retractable shade sails. So um both to uh, you know, be able to respond to high wind situations as well as changing light conditions. But that structure uh will be able to uh provide an infrastructure for heating if that tenant chooses to do that. Um, that would be a tenant finish component, um not something that we would be uh doing as a part of the core and shell uh preparation for that tenant. Um, there is, there is no specific tenant in mind, however, there are lots of candidates. Um, and that's, that's about all I I know at this point. Um, and I think until we, until we know that this project is, you know, approved and and ready to go, you know, we'll we'll probably have more information on that hopefully soon. Um, I know, I know TiVo will be very interested to have that information soon, so. Um, and then there was the third question, and you might need to remind me what that was.
Uh, that is the, how long does the construction?
Oh, okay, great question. Yeah, so a- as a part of this team, um, leading up to Historic Preservation Commission meeting, we've had PG Arnold Construction onboard to do cost analysis, uh to do logistical analysis. And um we spent quite a bit of time um uh looking at uh how this building will go up. Because obviously, if it goes slow, it has cost implications. And this is a tight site and it it just has almost no availability to stock materials or dirt or really anything. So um, so that, that question is is really important. Um, this, this will i- if we could do this faster than a year, we would be very happy. Um, I think projections have been um between eight and ten months. Um, but it, you know, it it's optimistic um until we can get this building down and see what the soil conditions are and see what what we're going to be working with. Um, well, we'll have a better sense then, but projections right now are eight to ten months.
Okay.
A year would be more reasonable.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, um, and then I was wondering about the lighting on the deck uh as well as where you're having the music. Is that like in the back or on the deck part? And is there any other windows other than the one that is um on the south side of the building where the patio is or the little deck?
So there are no other windows on the building, and the reason why is that we are literally on the lot line. And so in order to do any sort of window or fenestration on a lot line wall requires um an inordinately expensive fire-rated glass and um and window assembly. Um, so that's why we have um a little bit of a roof deck in a recess so that we can comply with building code with um with glass, but uh in a recessed capacity. Um, in terms of where the music will be, um, you know, I think that that is uh that's fluid at this point and flexible. I think that um there's certainly a lot of situations that would work. Um, having it at the building, projecting towards Main Street seems like the most logical way to do that. Um, and then the lighting, um, I think the intent is to be able to do string lighting. So that's a, that's a a low lumen output per per uh per lamp. However, you know, there are multiple within a string, so it has, you know, it kind of creates that general environment. But it's sort of more at like a little bit brighter than Christmas light level rather than like full illumination as an indoor environment might might want to be. So um all, all of those will be on dimmers as well.
That makes perfect sense. Yes. And then I also just wanted to say that I, your presentation was just quite amazing. I just, everything I was hoping to see, I got to see. I was hoping to see 3D drawings and just kind of a mobile look in how all the flooring would be and the different setbacks. So I really appreciate what you did there. It was just incredibly well done. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Do we have any other commissioner questions of the applicant or staff? Or, yes, Commissioner Moline?
I have one for Lisa. Lisa, in your matrix on the kind of outdoor sound.
Yeah.
You, you don't, you don't necessarily have to pull it up. I just wanted to, one clarification for me. In the places where it notes that, maybe, maybe we will have to pull it up.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up now. So let me scroll and then I can share. Let me find that page here.
Commissioner Howe, you were off of my screen. I didn't see whether you actually had any questions at this time. No? Okay, great. Thanks.
All right, we'll share our screen. Here we go. So I'm thinking you were referencing this table.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, awesome. So I think my, 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 my one question is, is like for the three properties near the, or two of the properties near the bottom there, Poor and Lulu's and then Lucky Pie, where it says no outdoor use past midnight, and then it's not mentioned, the music. That means that it would be allowed, I'm assuming that music would be allowed until midnight there?
I think that's how staff would interpret this. So yeah, as you know, these kind of, these conditions and talking about music have been iterations over time as these have come through hearing. And so, yeah, I think given that it's not specified, we would allow music, you know, kind of within those hours. And so as you can see on this table, a lot of these don't have morning hours. This is kind of new, you know, so we've started going even now, kind of putting parameters around all sides and all activities. And so, yeah, this is a good table to bring up. They're certainly not outside of the realm of others, but I think they, they would be on the more permissive side compared to some of these other properties.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Sure.
All right, seeing no additional questions at this time, we do move into public comment period. And Lisa, I believe we have some emails to enter into the record.
Yeah, so there, I will read two emails to you that came in to the planning commission or the planning email very late today. So the first one is from an email address, patraco@comcast.net. And I don't know if they're in attendance, but it just says, "I'd like to comment on the plan to expand the rear of 809 Main and allow outdoor eating and live music. We live on the Farge and are very affected by all of the noise activity, crowding, increased traffic, et cetera, by all of the restaurants in Louisville right behind our home. The last thing we need is more noise, more smoke, more people congregating behind our backyard. The Waterloo has already proven to be very challenging for us. We're constantly having to hear all of the crowd noise, radio music and live music when we really would like a little quiet. Why can't they point their speakers toward Main Street instead of us? Imagine watching a movie during a quiet scene and all you hear is noise from the restaurants, not to mention trying to sleep at night. This last year really has been much nicer for us in this regard, except for all the extra traffic directed on the Lafarge, which is another story." And then I say no to this request. So that email came in. The other email was from Marianne Gibbs, who is also a resident on the Lafarge block immediately to the west. "I'm a big supporter of live music, but not daily until 12:00 AM with no way to escape as my home backs to the alley from Lafarge. We will do our best to attend the online meeting. Thank you for doing the hard work of negotiating balance and interface between a cherished vibrant Main Street and the adjoining historic residence. It's a unique and nuanced interface which deserves a mutually agreeable solution."
And do we have anybody here in the Zoom to participate?
There is one member of the public. I don't see a hand raised. Again, if you'd like to speak, hit star nine on your phone or the raise hand button on the screen if you'd like to add a public comment.
Or unmute your, well, actually, we would have to unmute you, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a hand raised. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as the meeting goes on.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So I think, you know, as we've discussed in the past, if planning commission has concerns around days of the week, or, you know, they could treat, also, you could treat that rear balcony differently than the front balcony. So all of those certainly are within kind of the purview of, you know, any conditions. Again, you know, staff's always interested in hearing from the public, but we aren't attaching any conditions to this at this time. But certainly, you know, something we'd like to hear from you on.
All right. In the meantime, I entertain a motion to enter those two emails into the record, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline. And a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And do we really have to do roll call on this? No? Okay. So we'll just by voice vote approve it? Okay. Excellent. If we can, yeah, there you, thank you for unmuting yourself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, we'll enter those into the public record. And thank you to the applicants for sharing their concerns. At this point then, I would be moving on from public comment as it doesn't appear we have any additional comments. And see, do we have any final last minute questions from commissioners? All right. Well, then we will close the evidentiary aspect of the hearing and invite staff summation.
Sure. Again, thank you for your time tonight and your thoughtful consideration, as always, with good questions. We also have Kim Bauer on the call. I didn't mention that earlier. She is our Historic Preservation Planner. So if you didn't have a chance and you did have some questions more about how that relates, she's certainly available to you as well. But again, we're recommending approval with no conditions. And staff is supportive of the redevelopment of the site.
Now I invite the applicant to offer any closing remarks.
Thank you again. Thank you for the kudos and, and for the opportunity to present the project. I, I have, I have no further comments. I, I feel like I've taken up a lot of your time. I will, I will offer to Mr. Busef, if he would like to offer anything in closing.
I'd just like to say, we too are grateful for Andy's design abilities and more importantly, his stewardship of the town's needs and concerns, obviously owning several properties. And in town, we are, you know, we try to be as, as helpful and cooperative as we can. And kudos to Andy to talk us out of maximizing the size of that property. As you all know, it's, it's usually more cost effective to make things bigger and, and so forth. And even though the costs go up when you make things smaller, I think it's the, the best approach to be a good neighbor, especially on Main Street. And so we're, we're grateful for his creativity and more importantly, how he looks out for the best interests of, of all the neighbors and the codes. And, and again, a thank you to the board for volunteering their personal time to, to serve the town as well. That's it.
Thank you very much. And now we actually officially close the evidentiary aspect of the hearing. Open it to commissioner comments and discussion. Why don't we start? I'll just go around Robin to save us some time here. Commissioner Howe, you look like you're ready. Any comments or discussions on the issue?
Well, yeah, I, I think you had me at 809 Main Street. You had me at 809. And I do commiserate with the citizens' concern on Lafarge to the amplified music. However, I, I think that the music requests are consistent with the downtown areas and, and this being a, a nice opportunity to renovate a building that hasn't had a tenant for a long time. I think that there are some benefits in regards to the development and proposal. So I think that it meets all the, all the requirements and I appreciate the presentation by, by Andy and, and also the effort to fulfill all the obligations of, of the proposal without too many waivers. I think the 20, 20 foot rear setback is, is, is appropriate and that waiver should be allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Moline?
Well, I really, I concur quite a bit with Keaton or with Commissioner Howe. I, I really appreciate the attention that the applicant has taken to, to fit this, the building into this lot and the architectural attention as well. I, I just really appreciate that. This is an important part of downtown and I think we're really getting, we're gonna, we're gonna actually see improvement in, in, over what's there currently. So I just think this is a great opportunity and I appreciate that. I guess I, I, I share Commissioner Howe's kind of thoughts on the, the outdoor music. I am sensitive to people having some concerns about that. But again, I really appreciate the design that the applicants have proposed to kind of aim that, aim that use to the Main Street side of the lot. And so I'm, at this point, I also am ready to support the, the proposal as, as suggested by staff without conditions. And I agree with staff's assessment that the, the project is compliant in, in, in terms of both PUD and special use standards. And then I'm, I'm also supportive of the waiver.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Moline.
You bet.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yeah, I, I agree with most of what's been said. This looks like a great project to me and a, a great way to use the existing space and, and make it better. And, and I personally really enjoyed the historic photographs. My, my one comment, and this is more of a comment for all of us than for the applicant, is the issue of outdoor music has been coming up with some frequency over the past few meetings. And it feels a little to me like, like our approach is sort of one-off, ad hoc, make it up as you go along. And I wonder if we shouldn't have given thought at some point to coming up with a more sort of established set of guidelines or rules or assumptions to make sure that we're treating like situations alike when it comes to hours and music and that sort of thing, recognizing that these, these conditions typically get attached to the PUD and, and may survive through multiple owners. And those owners may ultimately have no, no say in what they inherited on their PUD and try to make the decision based on the land use, not on the, the specific sort of idea, whether it's a, a moxie bread or a Waterloo or whatever, and, and just thinking about where it is, what the use is and, and what the appropriate hours and, and music are for that location and use. But otherwise, on this project, I think we're in, in great shape. So thanks everyone.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hefner. Commissioner Williams?
And actually, when I looked at that chart of all the other businesses that had theirs approved for till midnight, and I looked at moxie bread and it's till 10, I kind of regret that, thinking, why didn't we apply that exactly, you know, to the standards for the entire downtown? Because everyone else has it till midnight. Not that they wanted to use it till midnight, but you, you never know where it will go and what iterations it'll change business-wise over time. So I agree with Commissioner Hefner about that as well. But I also wanted to say that I thought the downtown design standards and SRU standards were well done by the designer, the architect on this whole project. It, it seems like he read everything and checked it off and made sure that everything was in compliance and exactly in compliance. So I appreciate that and it's very nice to see. So I love the historical preservation, restoration and renovation in addition to the building. So it's, to me, a win-win. I think it's going to be a great project and good for downtown. So I'm going to be supporting it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I also find myself in support of the project as proposed. Commissioner Hefner, I do really appreciate you commenting on that. I hope that we will be able to get some increased uniformity as, as projects move forward. I also find that, that this is a great way to save a historic storefront and breathe, breathe life into it for many years to come, right? This is a significant investment in that property. So I think it's one way to harness part of the market with a little bit of help from historical preservation funds or perhaps a significant amount of help from historical preservation funds to, to maintain this look and feel for our Main Street. So at this time then, I would entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll move approval of Resolution Three Series to 2021. A resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development to allow renovation of a portion of the existing structure and to allow construction of an addition on the existing structure and associated site improvements and a special use, excuse me, special review use to allow use group 35 outdoor eating and drinking establishments at 809 Main Street.
Thank you, Commissioner Moline. And a second, second from Commissioner Hefner. And a third from Commissioner Williams. Thank you. Appreciate you all being there. With that then, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Chair Braunis?
Yes. Thank you all very much and best of luck with the project moving forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. With that then, we'll move into our second item of new business regarding building height calculation code. And I believe Director Zuccaro, your lead on this one?
Yes. Good, good evening, everyone. Rob Zuccaro with Planning Building Safety Department. I'm going to be presenting on this item. So this is something, well, let me get my screen share here real quick. This is something that the city council has had on their work plan since at least last year for staff and the planning commission to look at. I'm, I think I need somebody to let me share my screen, Lisa. We, so it's been on work plan since last year. We didn't get around to it because of COVID and staffing issues, even though it's not an overly complex issue. So we do have, so Steph just went ahead and actually drafted something for the commission to react to here. So we're really interested to get your input, see if you are supportive of this is drafted or with some conditions before we move it on to city council. Can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. No, yeah, we're seeing both screens.
And?
It's kind of a weird mode.
And you're in, so we're seeing if you have a dual monitor setup. I think we're seeing both of those.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you want to try to do share window, maybe?
Yeah. How about now?
There it is.
Okay. All right. So, so we, so we've actually put in front of you a draft ordinance. So we've published this as a public hearing. So you, and you have a resolution for a recommendation to city council. So I'm going to kind of go over, and I know some of you were around the last time, I think staff kind of addressed this issue. So this is really basically how we calculate building height. It's how we calculate it for any structure in the city, whether it's commercial or residential. But we've really heard some concerns about in residential areas, especially in Old Town. And the concern is, is that some developments, and I do think it's rare, but there might be some developments that do kind of manipulate grade a little bit in order to gain a little additional building height. And so the, our current, I'm going to Um, and so, the, our current, I'm gonna kind of walk through how we do current um, height calculations based on our current code. There probably is at least one big loophole that we wanna try to address, either with staff's proposed version or some version of a new code. Um, so what's up in front of you here is just a really basic, simple site plan that you might see in a residential area and how we calculate building height under our current code. So, what it says is that you're supposed to take the highest and the lowest corners of the structure. So, in this case, we've got an elevation. So, we're doing this as elevation above sea level. It's fifty-three thousand, um, five thousand three hundred and seventy-one point four feet at that corner. Um, and then over on this corner is fifty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-six feet. So, where the, that's the high corner and the low corner. Now, that's where it meets the finished grade. So, that's how our code reads right now. So, you can see the light dashed line. That's kind of pre-construction grade, and then we've made an attempt to show a darker line. So, oftentimes when you build a house, almost always you build up the grade around the foundation to get positive drainage. So, we're always seeing at least some buildup around the foundation. Um, so we, under our current code, we would take that five thousand three hundred and seventy-six, five thousand three hundred and seventy-one point four. We'd average them together. And then you would get um, an average grade based on those corners, and then you get your maximum allowed height. And then, of course, the proposed building height has to be no higher than that. So, that's how we do it now on most developments. Um, every now and again, there's an issue. So, this is an image actually from twenty fifteen. This is when the planning commission and city council lost, last saw an amendment to how we did building height calculations. Um, and this was pointed out by staff as, as a potential issue where you, somebody might build up the grade um, around the house in order to get some additional building height. So, the, the amendment to the code at that time stated that if you are building up the grade at those corners where we measure more than a foot, then you are supposed to go ten feet out from the building and measure at that point. So, in this, in this image, and again, this is not to scale. This is just very conceptual kind of, just so you can get an idea. Um, you know, you're kind of back down to that natural grade. So, if you took your twenty-seven foot height limit, you know, you wouldn't be able to build a house that tall. You wouldn't be able to artificially build up the grade to get that additional height. Uh, you know, if you're taking it from the building corner, maybe it would be, you know, something like this. So, that was the solution in twenty fifteen, and I think that works for most properties, but we still have some issues. Um, so this is just an example. If you're building up that grade by just a little bit over a foot, so then you go ten feet out, you get your average grades. Um, it's very similar to as if you were taking it at the corners for your base grade. Where we have run into an issue is what if somebody really manipulates the grade at that ten-foot point? Our current code says you go ten feet out, but you can change that grade ten feet out as much as you want. Um, so in an excuse, in an extreme circumstance, somebody might build a retaining wall and really build that grade up. So, this has built up the average grade with use of retaining walls. Um, you know, by, uh, you know, a couple of feet above what we might normally see at that natural grade level. Um, we do actually, again, it's rare, but we actually see it. Here's an example where somebody actually built retaining walls. Um, you know, ten feet out from the corners in order to get additional building height, rather than if they took nat- natural grade. Um, you know, it would be a little lower. Again, this is not to scale. This is just a very rough estimate, just to kind of prove the point. So, this is where not having a, a limitation on that grade at ten feet can cause an issue where you get things that are really out of scale to the neighboring development. Um, so what we're proposing, what we put in this draft ordinance is to take the definition of grade, ground level. So, that's, that's the term that we use in our current code and change that to natural grade. So, that's really intended to be the pre-construction grade before any fill is added to the property. Now, we've defined that as being before new development or redevelopment. So, we are acknowledging, let's say, your typical Old Town lot. You know, that's not natural grade from, you know, eighteen seventy or, you know, before the original house was built or eighteen ninety. Um, you know, we're not gonna be able to determine that. Um, so where it's either, you know, if you're scraping a building and you're redeveloping, we're saying that's natural grade too in the code. So, if, if it's a green field, never been developed before, that's natural grade. If you're scraping a house or making an addition to the house, we're using that existing grade. That's our intent, but we don't want people to build up the grade to get additional height. Um, we remove the regulations from the definitions. Right now, you really have to read the definitions to know the regulation, just as um, just as a matter of trying to clean that, clean that up. We added um, building height regulations to chapter seventeen sixteen in the zoning code. That's um, general regulations, and then there's a subsection now specifically for height calculations. So, we still have definitions, but you can actually go to a, um, a section of our code, and it should say, this is how you calculate height. Um, our current code, that does, it does allow that twelve inches of fill at the corners. Um, and again, that's you know, mostly to allow some positive drainage without um, kind of discounting allowed height. Um, we're proposing to keep that twelve inches. So, you can still build, even though we have this definition of natural grade, we, we, we um, put a provision in there that said, if there is some fill added, you can, um, you know, that up to twelve inches, you can kind of add that to your height calculation as well. So, we're trying to keep people whole under what our current regulations would be, but really just eliminate that issue of you know, going ten feet out and having no restriction on that grade ten feet out. So, if, if under our current code, or I'm sorry, under the proposed code, um, where you have these kind of ex- more extreme retaining walls, and we were making people measure from the natural grade at the corners, instead of, say, an average grade of fifty-three seventy-five point six, your average starting grade might be fifty-three seventy-three point three. That doesn't include the twelve feet of fill, but in any case, I think you're getting the point. Um, you know, we're just doing it at the corners. We're doing it from natural grade with some additional exceptions and definition. Um, in order to kind of try to close that loophole where you measure ten feet out. Um, so just a couple of considerations to um, most new development, we need to provide a survey with one-foot contours and existing and proposed grading. Um, our current height calculation methodology that we have published on our website actually requires this already to have one-foot contours of existing and proposed grade. So, we're trying to do that now, even with our current methodology. Um, we purposely didn't require in the, in this version of the code that surveys be to a specific elevation datum. So, there are kind of, um, you know, in the survey world, there's a, a, the most common datum now. It's called NAVD eighty-eight, and that's your elevation above sea level. If we required people to do that, surveyors would have to go find a, a, a formal benchmark that has a vertical elevation and then um, survey into the property. We purposely didn't do that, because we knew that would be difficult and expensive for a lot of properties. So, we left it more general, and I, I think that the idea that's important to staff is that it is natural pre-construction grade. We get a base site plan so that when we, when the project is under development, we can get a height survey, and we're comparing apples to apples. So, whatever base site plan we're using, um, you know, we're using the same datum or the same, you know, zero point on the survey for the lot. Um, so that'll take some administration from staff. Uh, but it, it doesn't change that much from our current intended procedure and even under the current code. Um, uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that building additions and other minor permits, what we've contemplated as staff is that, you know, if somebody doesn't have a survey, um, or it's a more minor permit that does need height calculations, we could use two-foot contours from our GIS system. So, that's this image here. Um, and do some interpolation if we needed to between building corners to understand height. Um, you know, in some cases, I would say we might need some additional professional survey work and we, you know, but we try to minimize that as much as possible in the implementation. Um, the last thing that we put in the code is that if, uh, if a project has through a final plat or a PUD or a general development plan, an approved overlot grading plan, so it's a multi-parcial development, a multi- multi-lot development, and they've gone through a public review process and they intend to overlot grade to set a new established grade, that would be the natural grade that we measure from as well, um, rather than some historic pre-construction grade, because then that would take into account, you know, a very purposeful um, setting of a grade for a, a planned development, rather than a lot-by-lot development. So, everybody would know what the baseline for the heights would be um, set at through that process and through a public process. So, with that, I would um, ask for any questions for staff on the proposal.
And just a quick point of clarification, uh, we are gonna be voting on this? Is that accurate?
Yeah, I, it's set up for you to vote on it. I think if, because we did notice it as a public hearing. So, if you're comfortable with it, you can vote on it as is, or perhaps with some um, minor amendments. I think if you want major amendments or changes or additional study, we could either renotice or continue the hearing.
Okay, great. Uh, so then I also need to clear out of the way, uh, if any of the commissioners have a disclosure or conflicts of interest? Great. Thank you. Seeing none. Commissioner Williams.
Uh, so yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, kind of about drainage. Um, so I understand um, that it's positive drainage that we're talking about. And so, I'm assuming that you have in here, I didn't see specifically if you did, but um, how positive are we talking? Is, is there any um, room for um, misinterpreting positive drainage in this?
I think that's pretty standard in the building code. There's a, a very minimal button and a minimum slope under building code that you have to grade out a few feet away from your foundation. That's really all that's in the building code. Um, and again, I, I would say that, you know, that would have a mi- I think what we wanna make sure that we don't overly impact building design either. You know, there's ceiling heights and building design. We wanna make sure people can build um, you know, houses with good design uh, as far as what the house looks like, but also accommodate some positive drainage. It's very minimal typically the distance and the slope that you have to drain away from a foundation. Some people drain more um, at a more severe slope, but it's, it's usually, um, you know, it's usually not even too noticeable the minimum, if you're just meeting the minimum slope in the building code.
Okay, so yeah, I was, uh, the drainage piece is what is um, tripping me up on this, and the reason being is it's very subjective, at least that's how I feel. Um, because, well, first of all, I mean, I can just name a ton of reasons of how it can be subjective, um, such as um, you're close enough to a floodplain, but you're not in a floodplain, and you wanna be able to um, bring that up a little higher, yet you still have positive drainage, but you want your um, development to be a little a little higher out of the floodplain. That's one uh, scenario. Another one is maybe that the water tables underneath are a little too high, and you would wanna build up um, to prevent any kind of um, uh, water backups. So, that's another um, uh, let's see, there is a couple others. I was thinking um, um, mostly due to water tables or underground um, aquifers or anything like that. So, I mean, are we addressing anything like that in this?
So, I
No.
Let, let me try to answer your question a little bit, but I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I'll answer everything. Um, so I, so I think when, on a, on a very typical lot, and really the majority of lots, um, you know, y- you don't have floodplain on the property. If you do, you're in a kind of a whole new ballgame for floodplain development permitting and what your requirements are. Um, and
Okay, I'm, I agree, you can't build on a floodplain. Um, but you're near a floodplain. You're maybe a hundred feet from it, and you are wanna um, protect your development with um, grading it higher. I mean, i- are we allowing that kind of um, scenarios in this?
I would say um, not necessarily, and I don't think our current code does either. I think um, it doesn't really provide somebody additional height if they're concerned about actual stormwater flooding. Um, our current code nor the proposed code addresses that directly.
So, this is a great opportunity to, like, if we need to do that, is that something we should be doing?
I don't, I, I don't believe that's an issue um, that would need to be addressed. I think this is kind of a, this is a, a character issue for uh, neighborhoods and houses. You know, we will, for every zone district, we have a height standard, and the purpose of that height standard is to maintain consistent character within different neighborhoods. And so, what our height calculation standards are meant for is to provide consistency um, within that, how that's done and how that character is maintained.
Right, I get that. Um, I just, I'm, I'm really tripped up on the drainage piece, because it's, it, it um, and I understand that you've put in a lot of um, criteria on the drainage. Um, but I think that there's other pieces to the drainage, um, such as, you know, um, what I just mentioned, uh, where you're near a floodplain or you're, you know, five hundred feet from one, and you wanna bring up the, the property. Um, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if
Yeah. I, I would, I would think there's a couple things. I mean, if you're part of a broader development, there is a, there's typically a drainage plan, a comprehensive drainage plan um, that you would be complying with. Um, I think if you're just a single lot and you're concerned about drainage, I mean, there's swales, there's French drains, there are, um, you know, if you actually wanna build up your finished floor um, to be above a certain elevation, um, you could probably, I mean, you can do that with, within a lot of our height standards and still have a, a well de- well-designed house. Um, maybe you're bringing your ceiling heights down, a- a- and honestly, if you're in a very unique circum- I think that would be a really unique circumstance for Louisville. We have very few homes in floodplain now, just a few along the golf course and some on um, kind of the, the north side of the city near South Boulder Road. Um, but in any case, you know, if you were really in a unique circumstance, you could apply for a zoning variance with our board of adjustment. That's kind of the quintessential case for a board of adjustment zoning variance is you've got some floodplain hazard and you need a couple feet of additional height, because you're in a unique circumstance. So, I don't know, I, I hadn't really contemplated trying to address that. I, I don't know how we would, because, you know, if we allow kind of carte blanche every, and, you know, everybody can get two or three extra feet if there's a drainage issue. Um, that, you know, we aren't, if, what we mean by the extra twelve inches is, hey, if you're just meeting your building code standard and there's a very objective building code standard, you know, we, we don't wanna ding you for building up more than twelve inches. If you wanna build up more than twelve inches, go ahead, but that's prob- you, you don't get to include that in your height calculation. You don't get additional building height. If you wanna add, if you wanna raise your finished floor six inches or a foot, you don't get an additional, you know, you don't get that extra foot on your roof peg. You're gonna have to design within that constraint.
So, in other words, we have other mechanisms that would address that, that we wouldn't have to include in here. If you were in a situation where you're five hundred feet from a floodplain or, um, or it's become a nearer uh, to a floodplain, or you find that the water table underneath you is risen, um, there are other mechanisms that
Yeah, and I, I think the water table issue, um, grading around your foundation wouldn't um, address any kind of water table issues. Those are gonna probably be addressed more with your foundation and some pump-type design. Uh, if you have water table issues, you'd be more concerned about, you know, foundation being damaged or moving, or, you know, water in a basement, if you had a basement, if you were even allowed to have a basement, if you had that much water.
Wouldn't you raise the um, Wouldn't you raise the, the height of the grading in order to do that or no? Like if your water table, you know, is not, you know, it's, I don't know, eight feet below you and you want to raise it so that it's 12 feet below you, I mean, isn't, is that like a, I mean, I know they do that, but is that something that we need to address in here or is there another mechanism? I mean, that's the only piece on the drainage pieces is where I'm at, but I'm going to let other people talk about this.
Yeah, I assume we have a number of units raised. Go ahead Director Saccara and then I'll recognize.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I guess I probably don't know enough about the water table issue from a technical standpoint. I really haven't seen anything like that where somebody's significantly raising a, I guess a basement, you know, a basement to get out of a water table. I've certainly heard of people not putting in basements because of water table issues. But it's not that somebody wouldn't. I'm not familiar with it though.
Can we recognize Mr. Johnson has his hand raised? If we can, oh, no, there we are, yes.
Yeah, hi, thank you. This is Andy Johnson, DAJ Design, 922 A Main Street. I think I might be a little out of turn. I think this is maybe just commissioner's time, but I, I would love to answer these questions because I, you know, this is, this is a topic that has been for the last 20 years, something that we have done so many different ways because of the different iterations of interpretation of height. And, and it particularly affects Old Town where we have a much lower height regulation. So I very much compliment staff for taking this on, simplifying it, making this easy. This, this process, but what's being presented is, is really a good, a really good step forward. And I have, I have four people in my office, all of us very opinionated and have had lots of go-arounds with, how do we do this and how do we make it easy? Because we're the tire kickers. We're actually the ones doing this and calculating it and then having it judged. And so this, this way that Rob is presenting is, is has unanimous support from my office for whatever that's worth. In terms of floodplanes, so I've worked on floodplain projects and they are inherently very difficult. These are not local jurisdiction projects. These are FEMA regulated projects. So there are national standards by which you have to build by, particularly when you're going lot by lot. And there are ways to do it. It, it's tricky and hopefully, I would hope that any client that I work with who is in a floodplain will have bought that property with, having read those disclosures in the sale agreements. It's important to know what you're getting into. This is not something that a height rule will solve. They are much more complex and, and certainly require a lot more work than, than simply looking at drainage. However, when you're thinking about a commercial project or as Rob mentioned, a larger development, that's potentially going to have as a part of the site documents that are presented for the PUD, it's going to have an overlot and a grading plan by which we could look, you could look at raising that elevation height. You could look at dealing with those sort of issues. And more than like, more likely than not, most projects, particularly like the ones at the CTC or larger commercial developments will have some sort of overlot plan. And what's being proposed is that our height requirement is set from that benchmark that gets approved through its own approval process. So that's really great. And we've worked on, we worked on a hilly site in Louisville, commercial, big one. And it was tricky to figure out how to do the height. So I think this helps simplify that. High water tables do not come into play with this. That is typically only affecting basements and crawl spaces and also your bearing pressure for your foundations. However, the soils play a part of that as well. And the geotechnical engineers that are required on every project for new homes, major additions, all commercial work are really the ones who set the standards for what drainage looks like on projects. So building code has a generic kind of method for that, but the geotechnical engineers who sets those standards. And Rob's right, that 12 inch fall over a 10 foot kind of offset from the edge of the building is generally the way we do it. There are times where you need more. There are times where you need retaining walls, et cetera. But all of those things become architectural features and built into the project. And so they are, they are part of the design criteria and not impediments or not, not things that should be accommodated within a building height code. The simpler, the better. So anyway, I, I'm happy to answer any other questions if there are any technical ones that affect, you know, how do you use this, this rule? But I do want to compliment staff on taking a stab at this and making it simpler for us who kick the tires out there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Commissioner Hefner, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. Rob, I just have a, one or two questions. Looking at the draft ordinance you sent us in 171690B. I don't know if you have it up?
Yep.
Could you just talk me through, I think I understand what that's for, but I'd like to hear you say it and then see if it's the same as what I think.
Yep, sorry, let me just get to that section. Okay, so 171690B, so it's if the natural grade has been disturbed prior to development and an overlot grading plan has not been approved, the planning director shall determine the natural grade based on the best topographical information and mapping available for the lot. So we were trying to anticipate if there was a situation where, you know, we didn't have a base grade document necessarily, and we were in a situation where somebody had maybe dumped some dirt on the property or done, you know, because we, we've got some properties like that where people have stored dirt. And then we don't want somebody to come in and say, oh, look, my grades actually eight feet taller. This is my natural grade because they stored dirt there eight years ago. So we kind of wanted to have the opportunity to say, no, we're going to go back to previous, previous grade, you know, before the dirt storage came in. That's probably the most obvious example.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought it was. They're like, oh, what are you talking about? These wrecking walls have always been here, kind of thing. I think that being the case, my, my other question and comment, which is, I think the, the change to the definition of natural grade is maybe a little ambiguous. And I think, I think you could read it to be referring only to greenfields and not capturing that developed once and then redeveloped. And I, I don't want to tell you how to rewrite it in, in the moment, but I wonder, I wonder if we could say the elevation of a lot undisturbed by development, comma, or if the property has previously been developed, comma, redevelopment. Just to make clear that, that we're not saying we're going to go back to the, to the very origin of time to determine the natural grade.
Absolutely. And in fact, we, we put in, we just put in the term redevelopment kind of at the last minute before we presented it to Planning Commission, but I think your language further clarifies that. And that is our intent. So you, so I would say
That's all I had.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner.
Otherwise, I think this makes a lot of sense and is a, is a simple and good approach.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Williams, before we get too away from the issues we were raising, was there anything else you wanted to add or ask at this time?
No, I just wanted to, you know, call attention to the drainage. And if we were just missing a piece of explanation about drainage that would be included in there that is part of, you know, the raising it and building height, so in relation to that. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Great.
Explanation.
Thank you. Commissioner Moline.
Rob, thanks. I, I, my questions are related to what Commissioner Hefner noted as well. And I'm kind of curious, does the, I mean, at what point does somebody's ability to bring in fill legally to a lot? So let's say, I, I must admit, I'm a little unfamiliar with the city's kind of like grading regulations. And, and so I guess I share some, some concerns around, you know, like, I don't know, asking staff to kind of determine what that natural grade is. And if somebody legally, you know, bring, pulls a grading permit and brings in a bunch of fill and raises their lot a foot or something. I, I don't know, that, that's just a bit of a concern of mine. I'm supportive of the idea of this and, and will be in support of, if we take a vote this evening, I'll be in support of this change. But I just raised that issue and I wonder if you have thoughts around, I don't know, does this put a little bit of pressure on staff to, to make those kinds of decisions about, well, what was the grade before this fill arrived and that kind of stuff? So.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, there's probably no perfect way to solve that issue. And in my opinion, and that's kind of why we have the language the way it is, because I don't think there's going to be a one size that fits all. I think that could lead to some issues where there are disagreements. There's certainly appeal processes for that. Definitely wouldn't get there. I would say just, you know, I, I've had, I've worked under a previous, a very similar code to this in previous positions. And we've allowed, I mean, if there is a real disagreement on a natural grade, we've actually given the opportunity, for example, to have somebody do a soils boring. And say, no, you know, you know, so there's other ways, there's other evidence we could take in. And that's why we kind of worded it that way, because they could say, no, you think there's three feet of fill, but we had somebody actually do a soil, and that's an extreme circumstance, but there are options for that.
Okay, thanks very much, Rob. That, that's great explanation.
Great. Do we have any additional commissioner questions of, of the city, of the applicant? Seeing none at this point, make sure if there's anybody else in the public who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Either by clicking the raise hand button. Well, I think we don't have anybody on by phone right now.
I don't see any other hands raised. I think you're good.
Great, thank you. Last chance for questions. Seeing none, thank you. Then we move into a staff summation slash applicant closing remarks.
Nothing else. I think the, I'd be interested to hear if, if, if there are any additions. I know Commissioner Hefner had some proposed language that I actually had tried to, I kind of missed it. I actually like that language. I can go back and listen to the recording. But I'm, I'm interested mostly to know if you liked Commissioner Hefner's addition to the definition of natural grade. Or if you have any other additions or edits you'd like to see.
Rob, I can say it again if you want.
Okay.
So the proposal would be in 178205, where the, where the language is being added to change it to say the elevation of a lot, undisturbed by development, comma, or if the lot has already been developed, comma, redevelopment, including the addition of fill, firms, retaining walls and landscaping.
Thank you. So I, so I think if that's, you know, that could be included in your motion if the commission liked that language compared to what staff was proposing. Other than that, I don't have any closing remarks. Thank you.
All right, you, you're comfortable, obviously, apparently, right? You're comfortable with that language as stated? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner. Appreciate that. I think at that point then, we are entertaining it with this one change. That would close the evidentiary aspects of this hearing and move into any additional comments and discussion. In particular, if anybody was concerned about the language or proposed changes. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead. I move resolution, approval of resolution number four, series 2021. Resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code Title 17, zoning concerning building height calculations.
And a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Commissioner Moline with the second. Thank you. And roll call please.
Commissioner Hefner, did you add your new language to the motion?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, my, my motion includes the, the new language as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. All right, roll call, vote on the motion with proposed changes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Moline?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Joe Brice?
Yes. Thank you very much. I am also encouraged to hear from members of the public that this looks like a good path forward. I really appreciate that input. All right, with that then, we'll open it up for just general planning commission comments. So anything that anybody wanted to discuss?
I guess the only thing I have is that I wonder if we could add to our next agenda that isn't to pack a discussion of how to maybe move forward with something on the noise and hours, questions that have been coming up around downtown.
You know, I appreciate you bringing that up and I, I, I think it might be timely, kind of given where we are in some of these discussions. So yeah, I think Directors Akaro and I will have that conversation internally when, you know, involve appropriate other staff members. But I think that's something that would be an interesting discussion. So yeah, we will follow up on that. I don't know, Rob, if you have anything else you want to add on that comment?
No, I mean, there's, there's definitely some fairly recent history on the issue. I think the city, city council legal committee actu- actually, maybe about three years ago, studied this issue and they were looking at a decibel-based noise ordinance that would apply to downtown to try to address the issue. It didn't get kind of moved out of their legal committee up to city council. There's a lot of public comment about that. So we could kind of bring you background on that discussion and maybe have a little bit of a study session on it. We could talk about some of the pros and cons of kind of keeping it the way we do it versus having some changes.
Great, thank you very much.
I think it'd be also valuable to talk about where around the downtown area the densities of residential are and exactly how close those are to existing buildings. That would give us an idea about how consistent we can be in our decisions.
Yeah, I do think that would be helpful information. And I'm also thinking, you know, within our downtown design handbook, we have kind of a different, we have different standards related to the core area versus transition area, right? So there might be some ways that we could do kind of a tiered approach based on some of those context things. So yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good idea. Commissioner Howe, thank you for that. Right, and I think Moxie and Crystal Springs were put a different standard, different times based on the transition, one block from them as residential.
Yeah, I do think that was part of the rationale there, certainly. So, yeah.
Yeah, that was the rationale for Crystal Springs, especially, I remember that one because their, their outdoor areas are immediately adjacent and there wasn't really an opportunity to buffer the outdoor areas from the residences immediately across the street. But the, you know, the grain elevators also immediately across the street and they don't have the same restriction, but it was just a different era too.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All any additional commissioner comments, issues? Any staff comments? Great, thank you, all, any additional Commissioner comments, issues, any staff comments?
Um, yeah, you'll see that there are no planned public hearings for April. But that being said, I think staff is hoping to have a meeting that night. We have just, you know, some things we want to bring to you kind of in a work session format. I think this SRU kind of noise question, I'm hopeful we can get in front of that a little bit with you. And then I think we just have some other kind of zoning code amendments that staff is kicking around. I think we'd like to talk through those with you, so we'll confirm, you know, in the next week or so, if we will be able to get an agenda put together for you for the April meeting. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, we don't anticipate any public hearings, but we would like to, you know, just do a little more informal discussion on some of these things.
Yes, I would also just mention as a staff comment on the 2021 city council work plan is a review of the Old Town overlay zoning. And staff brought a RFP for consultant services this week to city council, which was approved. So we'll be hiring a consultant to help with first an evaluation of the Old Town overlay and then consideration of potential amendments to the Old Town overlay zoning standard, standards. And so really, what we want the consultant to do is evaluate kind of historic residential character, evaluate new development and how it influences that. And kind of, and then, of course, a lot of public outreach. So it's really trying to blend that architectural technical analysis with what does the public like? What do they think, you know, meets small town character? And trying to come up with some potential changes to Old Town overlay. So we're going to be kicking that process off. You know, I think we put in the RFP that our consultant and staff would be coming to Planning Commission for, you know, a few sessions in addition to all the public sessions before something gets adopted.
Great, thank you. I know that's extra work, but I think we all appreciate being part of that as possible, so appreciate it.
Do do we have a timeline of when we might be returning in person for these meetings? Do you know anything?
No, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, it's, I think that's the, we're getting that question more and more now and I don't I don't know. I think we're going to have to wait, I don't think anybody really knows when the state health department's going to lift restrictions to the extent that people are comfortable. And that, and then, of course, the people who need to participate are comfortable because they've had vaccines or otherwise comfortable because the caseloads are so low to be in person. So I think those are the things are that we're tracking, but there's, nobody's even tried to suggest a date yet. I think because there's too many unknowns with those things.
So there's like a plan that you guys are developing or anything at the moment, okay?
Yeah, not for public hearings. You know, we're, I think we're we're developing plans for reopening city hall for more hours. Right now, city hall's open two days a week for four hours and we're contemplating maybe another phase of opening where we'd expand those hours. But nobody's, but we don't even have a date for that, it's just, okay, when we're ready, how are we going to do it? And nobody's really started, at least that I'm aware of, has started talking about public hearings in person yet.
All right, good to know.
Great, well, thank you all very much, I think that wraps up our meeting. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all, stay safe this weekend.
Thank you, guys.
All right, bye.
Good to see everybody.